We're gonna get started with the agenda portion of the meeting, the agenda review session. First, we have ordinances on second reading. Orders number 701, an ordinance to adopt the New Brunswick Cultural Center redevelopment plan area in the city of New Brunswick. 702, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinance of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10 dot 16, Stopping and Standing and Parking, Section 10 dot 16 dot 050, Schedule 29, Timeland, Parking, Reference to Union Street. 703, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10 dot 16, Stopping and Standing, Standing and Parking, Section 10 to 16, 020, Schedule 24, No Parking Anytime, Reference to Wilcox Road. Alright, we have no ordinances on first reading. So we'll go to resolutions. Resolution 701, approve agenda amendments. 702, approve payroll. 703, authorize refund for redeemed tax sale certificates. 704, authorize renewal of agreement with County of Middlesex for basic life support program for 2017 amount to be received $53,000. 705, authorize general, okay, 705, authorize general application acceptance and execution of a grant for 2018, for 2018 pedestrian safety enforcement and education grant. 706, approve professional service agreement with innovative data solutions doing business as Power DMS Incorporated for power suite, uh, power suite subscription for police department. Term 12-month period commencing February 23rd, 2017 and ending February 22nd, 2018, not to exceed $6,022. 707, approve amendment of resolution, reason to pay $845.80 for interpreting service with Elsa Gonzalez and Para Plus translators incorporated for interpreters from the municipal court, not to exceed $845.80, specification number 497 dash 16 RFP. 708, approve award of contract with gold type business machines doing business as GTBM for the renewal of proprietary software licenses 31, info cut, annual license renewals, term 12-month period commencing January 20th, 2017 and ending January 29th, 2018, not to exceed $6,6562.46 non-pro ton. 709, approve amendment of resolution, R dash 011756, to pay additional legal fees in the amount of $22,706,37 to the Depoma Law Firm LLC for special counsel city of New Brunswick ads Marvick Construction Corporation from $227,766 to $250,484.3. 710, approve emergency temporary appropriation for 2017. 711, approve transfer of appropriation reserves for 2016 municipal budget. 712, approve purchase by police department under state contract A dash 89, 89851 for SHI International Corporation for annual software support and maintenance for the police department, 12, uh, 12-month period commencing January 1st, 2017 and ending December 31st, 2017, not to exceed $67,331.10 non-pro ton. 713, approve request for street closing requested by Our Lady of Mount Carmel Roman Catholic Church, location Moore Street, George Street, Livingston Avenue for Good Friday possession, Friday, April 14th, 2017, time 7:00 PM to 8:15 PM. 714, approve request for street closing requested by Johnson &amp; Johnson, location Livingston Avenue between George Street, New Street for Johnson &amp; Johnson Annual Shareholders Meeting, date Thursday, April 27th, 2017, 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM, police extra duty. Alright, we have 715, approve amendment of resolution, R dash 041630, reason to pay final invoices in the amount of $26,515.11 to O'Connor Davies LLP for forensic accounting expert litigation advisory services, city of New Brunswick ads ADS, uh, Marvick Construction Company, not to exceed $26,515.11. 716, approve request for the use of city property requested by Rutgers Hillel, location Bubba Lo Park and Pavilion for 5K run walk and one mile run walk, date Sunday, April 30th, 2017, time 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM. 717, approve request for the use of city property requested by Tree of Life Church, location War Memorial Park for religious event, dates June 10th, July 18th, August 12th, 2017, rainy day, Sunday, June 11th, July 9th, August 13th, 2017, time 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. 718, request for use of city property, TBD Vision LLC for, uh, location Boyd Park Amphitheater for Playground, Art Festival Event, Saturday, uh, date Saturday, June 10th, 2017, rainy day, Saturday, June 24th, 2017, time 12:00 PM to 6:00 PM. 719, approve request for the use of city property requested by Red Shaw Elementary School, New Brunswick Board of Education, location Youth Sports Complex, Teen Center for Red Shaw Elementary School Field Day, date Friday, June 9th, 2017, rainy day, Monday, June 12th, 2017, time 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM. 720, approve amendment of resolution, R, R dash 021638, change order number one, revision B with Suburban Consulting Incorporated for construction inspection and engineering services for the 2015 sanitary sewer systems improvements project phase 1A, 1B, uh, 2A and 2B, specification number 899, 15 RFP, amount $22,700, approve this change order will not constitute an increase of 20% or more of the amount of the original contract. 721, approve amendment resolution of change order number two with suburban consulting engineers for constructions inspection and engineering services for the 2015 sewer system improvements project phase 1A, 1B, 2A to 2B, specification number 899, 15 RFP, amount $1,800, approve this change order will not constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original contract. 722, approve amendment of resolution, R, R 11 dash 628, reason to pay additional fees in the amount of $11,842 to Warren Pro LLC for professional engineering expert services of the city of New Brunswick ads, uh, Marvick Construction Company, uh, Corporation from $56,276.47 to $68,118.61. 723, approve award of contract furnished and delivered chemicals for bulk feed facilities with Greer Lime Company Chemical, Chemtrade Chemicals, JCI Jones Chemicals, Unibar USA Incorporated, Shannon Chemical, term 12-month period commencing February 2nd, 2017 and ending January 31st, 2018, specification number 10620117W. 724, approve payment of special public defender services to Thomas P. Vold LLC, not to exceed $2,100. 725, authorize the mayor and city clerk to authorize and execute a contract with Gloria Sons LLC for facade, facade matching grant program in the Esperance Neighborhood using UDAG funds, location 350 Sedan Street, block number 160, lot number 21, not to exceed $19,328.80. 726, approve, approve request for parking of vehicles in Bubba Lo Park requested by Turner Construction Company for up to 30, 30 parking permits, date January 30th, 2017 to April 30th, 2017, cost $30 per vehicle per month, non-pro ton. 727, approve amendment of resolution, R dash 121657, reason to pay additional legal fees in the amount of $4,918 for Benedict and Altman for Police Director Anthony Caputo in the matter of Steve Middleton et al. versus the city of New Brunswick from $24,858 to 728, authorize the lease of a copying machine for the division of parts, Ricoh USA, Ricoh USA for one Ricoh model seat number C2503, colored digital copier machine, not to exceed $176.15 per month, commencing March 1st, 2017 and ending February 28th, 2021, 48-month contract, state contract number 40467 slash G207. 75, cockers, maintenance and supplies. 729, authorize the purchase by police department under state contract from Lanning &amp; Associates for 32 bulletproof vests for the police department, not to exceed $24,200. 730, approve amendment of resolution, R dash 031460, change order number one with suburban consulting engineers incorporated, engineering services for sanitary and storm sewer replacement, rehabilitation improvements project specification 843, 14RFP, amount $52,369, approve this change order will not constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original contract. Oh, Will, excuse me, thank you. Alright, 731, yeah, 731, approve the amendment of resolution, R 12, 121632, change order number eight, RBA, REVA for Underground Utilities Corporation for 2015 sanitary sewer system improvements project, uh, dash phase 1A, specification number 892 dash 15A, amount of $41,600, approve of this change order will constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original contract. 732, approve purchase by the police department under state contract from Heritage Fleet Services Incorporated for two 2017 Ford Fusion Sedans, not to exceed $34,800. 733, approve award of contract with CI Technologies Incorporated for maintenance, uh, for annual maintenance contract for proprietary software for the police department, term 12-month period commencing February 2nd, 2017 and ending January 31st, 2018, not to exceed $1,144. 734, approve request for solicitation fund requested by Rutgers University Dance Marathon to benefit, to benefit Embrace Kids Foundation, dates Friday, Saturday, Sunday, February 10th through 12th, 2017, February 24th to 26th, 2017, March 3rd through the 5th, 2017, time 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, locations George and Byard Street, George and Church Streets, George and Albany Streets, George and Commercial Avenue, George Street Nickel Avenue, George Street Livingston Avenue, George Street Liberty Street and Ryder's Lane and Dudley Road. 735, approve amendment for the resolution, R dash 101619, reason to pay the additional legal fees in the amount of $926.50 to Benedict and Altman for Detective Brent Graves in the matter of Dietrich Stollens, City of New, versus City of New Brunswick et al. from 736, award of contract for the authorization rebid, interpreters for the municipal court with Judith Grasberg, Louis Agarte, ASL Interpreter Referral Services Incorporated, Car Plus translators incorporated for 12-month period commencing February 4th, 2017, ending February 3rd, 2018, specification number 580 dash 17RFP, not to exceed $24,000. 737, advising consent to rent leveling board, reference to appointments and, and appointments and appointments, name Wendy Stella, Stella Tella expires December 31st, 2019, three years. Name Alex Lehrer, student rep, December expires December 31st, 2017, one year. Uh, name Margaret Avondo landlord rep, December 30th expires December 31st, 2019, three years. 738, absolute, uh, uh, approve award of contract with absolute fire protection for fire area ladder service, uh, prepared services, term 12-month period commencing February 2nd, 2017 and ending February 1st, 2018, specification number 573, 16P, not to exceed $20,000. Uh, 739, approve amendment of resolution, reason to change certification of funds account number to 2 dash 528 and 2 dash 30308 for the water utility with Enterprise Automation Incorporated for maintenance and repairs of supervisory control of data acquisition system, specification number 521, 16RFP, not to exceed $175,000. 740, approve amendment of resolution, change, reason change certification of funds account to 2 dash 528 for the water utility with BMW Construction Company of New, of New Jersey for equipment and labor, specification number 561, 16P, not to exceed $13,035.68. 41, approve the amendment of resolution, R dash 08, uh, R, okay, R dash 021740, reason to pay $39,535.28 for 2016 invoices for the Public Works Department with BMW Construction of New Jersey for equipment and labor, not to exceed $39,535.28, approve of this change order will constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original contract. 742, approve amendment of resolution, R dash 071628, reason change of certification of funds account, number five, number to 2 dash 528 for the water utility with Municipal Maintenance Company for mechanical, electrical maintenance and emergency repair work at the water treatment plant and pump station, specification number 49615W, not to exceed 7, 743, approve amendment of resolution, R dash 121668, reason change certification of funds account, number to 2 dash 528 for the water utility with Garrison Enterprise Incorporated for furnish, deliver and install insertion valves, line stops, emergency valve repair replacement, specification number 560 dash 16W, not to exceed $200,000. 744, approve amendment and resolution of R dash 121634, reason to extend the contract one additional year commencing February 4th, 2017 and ending February 3rd, 2018 with Sal Electric Company Incorporated for electrical maintenance and repair services, specification 49415P, not to exceed $106,000. 745, approve the relaxation of the noise ordinance requested by Midnight Signs Incorporated, reason replacement of an existing sign on the New Brunswick Parking Authority Moore Street Parking Deck, uh, date Saturday, uh, January 28th, 2017, alternate date, uh, Saturday, February 4th, 2017, time 8:00 PM, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, non-pro ton. 746, approve the amendment of resolution, R dash 111651, reason for the additional date to perform work or approve of relaxation of the noise ordinance requested by Lucero Mendez Construction LLC, reason for replacement of a significant area of concrete sidewalk in front of 25 for Patrick Street, date Saturday, January 28th, uh, January 28th and February 4th, 2017, alternate date Saturday, February 11th and 18th, 2017, uh, time 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, non-pro ton. 747, approve award of contract with Hatch McNone for 2017 miscellaneous supplemental engineering services, specification number 907, 17RFP, not to exceed $70,000 fair and open. 748, approve award of contract onsite fleet service incorporated, emergency vehicles, parts and repair service with the fire department, term 12-month period commencing February 2nd, 2017, ending February 1st, 2018, specification number 567, 16P, not to exceed $100,000. 749, approve award of contract with Business and Governmental Agency BGIA for insurance brokerage services prescription program, term 12-month period commencing February 1st, 2017, ending January 31st, 2018, and thereafter an additional 12 months should the city so desire, specification number 575, 17RFP. 750, 750, authorize application acceptance of the execution of the grant agreement for the 2017 New Jersey Department of Law and Public Safety Division of Highway and Traffic Safety for the 2017 distracted driving crackdown, you drive, you text, you pay, amount $5,500. 751, authorize the tax collector to transfer over payments on several tax and utility accounts. 752, approve site performance mod reduction to Westchester Fire Insurance Company for 760 Jersey Avenue, block number 598, lot number 303, that, no, lot number 3 dot 03. Then we got, uh, some closed discussions and everything else. Anything else? Alright, the meeting will come to order with a clerk, please do, it's, uh, take a little while.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Egan.
Here.
Councilmember Escobar.
Here.
Councilmember Socorro Ledwick.
Here.
Council President Fleming.
Here. Please be advised that the notice of the general, of the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act have been complied with and satisfied in that annual notice which gave sufficient notice to the time and place of the conduct of all meetings of the municipal council of the city of New Brunswick, has been filed with the city clerk and has been placed at the appropriate bulletin board on the lobby of the city hall, New Brunswick, New Jersey, has been transmitted to the official newspaper of the city of New Brunswick, namely the Home News Tribune. Come and please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
We're gonna take a moment of silence and bow our heads for those that have given their life in defense of freedom, those that continue to defend freedom, and those all around the world who are suffering instead of defending freedom. Alright, we have minutes, again. Okay, we're gonna, we have minutes, we have minutes right now, we're gonna ask, uh, I need a motion to approve the minutes.
Second, Council Vice President Anderson.
Yeah.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ledwick.
Yes.
Council President Fleming.
Yes. Alright, we have, now we have no public hearings, so we're gonna go to ordinance on second reading. Uh, we got ordinance number 701, an ordinance to adopt the New Brunswick, adopt the New Brunswick Cultural Center redevelopment plan area in the city of New Brunswick. Is anybody on the public which to speak on this, if hopefully step forward to the mic, uh, please give your name and address and remind you that you have five minutes, and please stay on any of the ordinance.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, members of the council, my name is Charles Cradaville, I'm from New Brunswick and I am the editor of New Brunswick Today, community newspaper, you all know that, just a, a couple of basic questions about this redevelopment plan, I was not able to make it to the planning board meeting when they approved it and I haven't been able to review the full plan, it's, uh, I think 50 or 60 pages, but I just wanted to ask more generally, in downtown, there's two, two, uh, big plans in the offing, right? There's this plan, uh, but there's also the Farron parking deck site that's being torn down presently, it's quite a sight to see, and that is gonna be an even bigger site where plans call for as many as four skyscrapers, not just one. My question is, if the city is setting out to build a cultural center, a performing arts center of sorts, you know, theaters and, uh, housing on top, or maybe offices as well, why not do that on the site that's about to be vacant, the site that's closer to the train station, uh, more prominent, more easily accessible, uh, a better example of transit-oriented development than this plan which is to destroy two, uh, longstanding theaters, forcing those theaters to find temporary spaces for however long the construction takes, which is expected to be at least two years, um, why not let them stay in the spaces and build the performing arts center or, or, you know, cultural center on this newly freed up huge swath of land, um, just a few blocks away and even closer to the train station, why, why isn't that the plan?
We have, just my, um, yes, my, um, the properties to my right over here are the cultural center for New Brunswick, uh, the plan does not involve the state theater building, it does not involve the Mason Grove School of the Arts, so they would still be here if we were following Mr. Cradaville's suggestion. Uh, the master plan calls for, uh, cultural activities to be concentrated in a distinct district, so that is what we're, uh, doing here, this cultural center has been extremely successful, it's one of the leading, uh, cultural center in, in central Jersey, if not the state, um, and you wanna have all those theaters, uh, next to each, each other, uh, they feed off of each other, uh, you get the restaurants, uh, next to each other, uh, supporting them, and, uh, that makes a lot of sense to have them, uh, together like that, they share a lot of services, uh, they'll probably be sharing, uh, loading docks and, uh, different lobby accesses and so forth, so there's a, a lot of, uh, benefits to having them, them all together. Secondly, the Farron site, we believe, is a very, uh, good site for, uh, more private style development, bring office tenants and retail, uh, into town rather than, uh, the theaters, the theaters for the most part of the day tend to be dark, whereas, uh, the Farron site that Mr. Cradaville is referring to is right by the train station, it's a very active, uh, part of town, everything would be better to have that activated all during, uh, the, the day rather than, uh, just at, uh, in, in the nighttime hours, uh, so we think the plan that we're calling for makes sense and it's, uh, how New Brunswick has, uh, developed and, uh, we think we'll make it for a better New Brunswick in the future.
Thank you for the thorough, uh, explanation of your position, I did wanna, um, ask what the relocation arrangements are for the two theaters that'll, uh, be losing their space after this season, have they, uh, been able to find locations to, um, continue their operations while the construction's going on, if so, where are those locations?
They're working out, but, uh, I don't know. They are working, um, out where they will relocate, I think they're, uh, working with, with Rutgers and some other, um, entities in town looking for some, uh, uh, temporary spaces and that'll all be worked out, the theaters are very supportive of this plan and it's gonna give them, uh, much nicer, newer, uh, theater space than what they have now.
I'd also want to say that the city market is also learning, so to make sure that people know it's not going dark at all, the plays will still go on, they'll just be at different locations.
Gotcha, and, uh, is it true that, uh, one of those locations is outside New Brunswick?
Is that, is it true that one of the locations?
I don't know if they finalized on, uh, on a location, um, I think I know what Mr. Cradaville is referring to, it, I think most people would probably think that's in New Brunswick, but, uh, it might technically be over, uh, just over the, uh, into North Brunswick, uh, the old, uh, agricultural museum is one of the things under consideration, but I don't know that any, uh, things been finalized on that.
Thank you. Thank you, Ken, and I'll just submit for your, for your consideration that, uh, if it's such an important goal to keep these theaters, um, together, uh, I have some concerns about them being split up and one of them having to be in a different town for a couple of years, um, what assurances can you give the public or the, the theaters that the new spaces will be available by a certain date, is there a timeline, is there a, a plan to make sure that they would be back in New Brunswick in the new spaces that they so desperately want, uh, by a certain time, or is this an open-ended indefinite, uh, thing where a temporary arrangement could end up lasting three or four or five years?
I think, all intention purposes, that any construction plans, they have plans to go a certain amount of time, but you never know what can happen, I mean, we can, all good intentions we can have, but I don't think that's their intention to stay out of town for far too long, I mean, Mr. Patterson wants to, you know.
Um, the redevelopment plan doesn't deal with what the construction timetables are for, uh, the project, but, um, as you just stated, the, um, working towards, uh, getting that, uh, done in, within two seasons, um, the theaters have been, been working with New Brunswick Development Corporation, uh, on developing this, the theaters want this, this is something that they want and are very, uh, supportive of, and the redevelopment plan does require that the two theaters, uh, be replaced, that there be two new theaters in the, uh, new plan, uh, new project that is, uh, developed there.
We have, I mean, everyone said we've survived where, at one point Crossroads was way down here, all the way here, and then George Street Playhouse was actually on George, you know, over here on George Street, and we still, that was our budding theater district, and then, when they came together, it was positive, and I think this is only gonna make it better, personally.
Okay, thank you, Mike. My concern stems from past, uh, situations like the Red Shaw School where building was torn down, new school was promised and ended up taking seven or eight years to get the new school.
That was a state, that was a state funding issue, you know, you had, you really had to, and we weren't the only ones that was, that were like that, I mean, I know several towns where we did get ours, we did get our school, and I know some towns right now that they still have empty lots after nine or 10 years, where they tore down entire neighborhoods and they still, that stem empty lot is still there, so I think we were fortunate to get it, even though it did take a long time, we still kept our eyes on the, the funding goals.
Thanks, and yeah, so, so that speaks to my point, I want to know what assurances are given, as mentioned, DEPCO is involved, um, you know, what, uh, what is the financing for this project, is this financing that could dry up in the same way that the School Construction Corporation funding dried up, or is this financing that's lock, you know, rock solid gonna definitely happen, um, what, you know, I'm just trying to think ahead to the potential pitfalls, you know, what, what, what can we do to prevent that, what, uh, what is the funding for this project?
The, um, redevelopment hasn't been named for the project yet, so there's no financing for the project at this time, they are pursuing a number of different financing avenues, um, as part of getting those financing approvals, they have to show that the project is feasible and can, uh, go forward, there are no guarantees in life, um, things, uh, can change if they're, you know, there's, you know, Um, things, uh, can change if there, you know, there's, you know, force majeure, uh, things like that that, um, could do us, I won't, you know, guarantee that it'll be done. But failure to move because of a, uh, uh, possibility that something might go wrong means that you never make progress. And I think this city has shown over thirty years here of taking, uh, the, the reasonable risk to make progress and we've made a tremendous amount of progress in this city to make it a better city. And we're gonna continue to do that with this project.
Thank you. Okay. I just think it's interesting that we said that, uh, Devco is involved, yet no redeveloper has been named. Uh, what do you think the chances are that Devco will be the redeveloper?
Mr. Cradaville knows from his history here in town that we work with, uh, different developers, uh, through the redevelopment planning process. Uh, that's how it works. That's so we can be efficient and we can try to, uh, assuage some of the concerns Mr. Cradaville has about, uh, the risks that are, are involved. We're not looking to go forward here, knock things down, then go look for a, a developer. This is a project that is a public-private partnership. It's being worked out with the theaters, uh, so that, uh, they are part of it, part of the design. They are, as I said, a couple of times, is they are in favor of this and, uh, and supportive of it. And we think it's gonna be, uh, a shining star for, uh, the city. Yeah, it's one of the things they are, uh, are pursuing, uh, right now. And, uh, you know, I think Devco has a, a good history of, uh, of completing the projects. They usually work with their contractors. We guaranteed maximum price contracts to, uh, um, ensure that things get done, uh, on time. Uh, they just finished, uh, a number of buildings up on, uh, the College Avenue area on time. Uh, things got, uh, got opened, uh, before the semester start. That's a similar situation that you deal with, with the theaters when they have, uh, dates when their, uh, traditional theater season starts. So, um, I think, uh, um, we have a good track record in, uh, completing projects like this and, uh, believe this will continue. I'm not gonna guarantee it, but, uh, we have a very good track record and it's a reasonable risk.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, Mr. Chairman, through, through you for, for Mr. Egan, could I just hear a little bit more about the EDA money that's involved in this project? Please, please.
Well, it's no secret that the governor signed, uh, uh, a, uh, a law or whatever to, uh, this, this project is, can receive money from the Economic Development Authority.
Millions?
Yes.
Okay, and also the county government?
Excuse me?
Also the county government chipping in too, right?
Yes. But the EDA money is in millions, yes.
Okay.
Forty? Forty, I thought it was eighty. Forty million gives it's out.
Forty million?
Yes.
To the EDA, okay. So, uh, I guess the, the only other question I have is when, uh, would the Housing Authority and the Redevelopment Authority have to, you know, when, when are they expected to make their decision on who the redeveloper is? And, and where does it go from there?
Um, first, you know, this has to get through, uh, the council adopting the plan. Once that is, is adopted, uh, adopted, um, an application being made to, to the Housing Authority. Uh, it's possible it could be, uh, later this month, but I would expect, uh, you know, either, you know, this month, next month, that, uh, an application will be made to, uh, via redevelopment.
Okay, and then it would have to, an actual site plan would have to be presented to the planning board? Is that correct? You guys as well?
Yes. Uh, preliminary, uh, concept plans will be, uh, shown to the Housing Authority for being designated as a redeveloper. And the project, just like other normal projects in town, is subject to, uh, site plan and barriers viewed by the, uh, planning board. Thank you very much for answering my questions.
Anybody else have any questions on the ordinance? Any concerns? Seeing none?
Motion.
Fleming. Councilmember, Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Fleming.
Yes. All right, next, seven oh two, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinance of the city of New Brunswick, Title Ten, Chapter Ten, Title Ten, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter Ten dot sixteen, Stopping and Standing, Parking, and Section Ten dot sixteen zero five zero, Schedule Twenty-nine, Time Limit Parking, reference to Union Street. Does anybody from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Please step forward, your name and address.
Good evening, once again, Charles Cradaville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick Today. Uh, can I ask whose idea this was?
Ask who? Whose idea was the ordinance to amend and supplement?
Okay.
We, we, we had a lot of complaints about a lot of vehicles parked on Union Street that parked there all day. People going to the train station here and there. So we decided to open it up for the yard and a lot of more businesses that are there. We'll put meters on one side and a short turn so you can get a turnover park.
So just to be clear, there'll be parking meters added to one side of Union Street and the other side will remain as it's been, or?
Yes.
Okay. And, uh, were any, you know, the, the folks who live on Union Street consulted? Were they the ones complaining? Uh?
Some of the people that live there, but they have all street parking themselves already. But there's a lot of them that were going to different locations and parking all day.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Seeing none?
Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Fleming.
Yes. All right, we got an ordinance seven oh three, an ordinance, oh, yeah, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinance of the city of New Brunswick, Title Ten, Vehicles and Traffic, uh, Chapter Ten dot sixteen, Stopping and Standing and Parking, Section Ten dot sixteen zero two zero, Schedule Twenty-four, No Parking at Any Time, reference to Wilcox Road. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one?
Once again, Charles Cradaville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick Today, same question. What, uh, whose idea was this, what's the purpose?
Please, the council addressed that. There is, uh, uh, Wilcox Road has a kind of a sharp turn in one area. There's a, a series of cars are parked there. There was complaints that two-way traffic was difficult. So because of an existing hedge in the geometry of the road, we're making just a short section about a hundred and ten feet as a non, as a no parking in the time zone, just so the traffic can flow around the sharp one.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else in the public like to speak on this one? Seeing none?
An ordinance?
Second. Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Fleming.
Yes. All right, now we have resolutions. Would anybody from the public, from Resolution Zero, uh, Revolution Zero One, all the way to the end? Would anybody from the public, please step forward, give your name and address?
What do you think?
Thank you.
Charles Cradaville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick Today. Thanks for the chance to address you. I noticed some, I guess maybe trends isn't the right word, and some themes here, so I'll ask about these in groups. So, starting with number six and, uh, twelve and thirty-three. These are all software for the police department. I'd just like to know what the software does, so six, twelve, and thirty-three?
Six, twelve, and thirty-three. Officer.
Uh, number, number six is the Power DMS. That's software that supports, um, it's an educational tool and record management tool for police department. A lot of training has gone on it. All, um, records are stored on it. Officers can go there to review all the past policies and procedures, class training documents. Uh, that software supports that system. Number twelve. S H I International. That is for, uh, support and maintenance of the CADs and record management system dispatch. What's the last one? Uh, I, I also, I missed eight. So while we're on this page, eight is the info cop software? What is that?
Info cop, that's twelve licenses for the N D Ts in a car which allow the officer to do more vehicle lookups.
Okay, and then thirty-three, E D A one?
Thirty-three is for the law saw system, which is a report writing system where the officer writes reports into vehicles.
Report writing, okay. Um, I guess we go to, uh, page eight and nine. I see several items here, uh, thirty-nine, forty, forty-two, forty-three. Sorry. Thirty-nine, forty, forty-two, forty-three are all change certification of bonds accounts for the water utilities. It's, uh, something I don't recall seeing, but what, can you tell me what it means to, to approve a change certification? Or why this, why these are necessary? What these amounts, uh, what the significance is in it?
Change cert, uh, you said thirty-nine?
Sorry, it's, uh, number thirty-nine and number forty are both water utility change certifications. Then on the next page is, uh, forty-two and forty-three are, are also similar water utility change certifications. What does that mean?
Council President, thanks for the, uh, yeah. Call Mr. Marchetta or, or.
Okay, please.
Really, it's just, uh, these were already pre-approved contracts that had been formed before council before, we're just reallocating money that was coming out of the capital fund and moving it into our O and E budget. Okay, so it's, you know, we're gonna be looking at some of these projects as being recurring, uh, with these companies, you know, constantly updating the system, any infrastructure and, uh, you know, it was, it was some work and, you know, we were able to do it. So it's, it's a much better way of doing it.
Thanks for the explanation. Glad to, uh, hear the water director's allowed to, uh, speak to me.
I'm speaking to the chair, too.
Okay, I, I'm just, I'm glad, I'm glad that the water director's willing to answer those questions. I hope he'll answer the other ones.
Okay.
Don't count them!
Just for, okay.
Okay, okay, well, so, okay. Number nine is the, uh, very expensive lawsuit. The legal bills are now, uh, over two hundred and fifty dollars, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And you'll also notice number fifteen and number twenty-two are, I guess, expert witnesses or people who helped with the case. That's twenty-six thousand and sixty-eight thousand. And I think that's it for this agenda with that one case. Can you tell me, how, did the city win or lose, or we don't know yet?
Mr. Morba?
Yeah.
When you're referring to, I believe that's still.
Uh, we don't have a decision yet, Mr. Council President. The final briefs are being, uh, prepared, that we submitted, that these several months before we had a decision.
Several months, okay. And can we expect more bills in those coming months, or will it quiet down?
We anticipate more bills than Mr. De Palma. I think there's one year that's a final on the forensic account. So we won't, we don't expect any additional bills from that firm. And one pro, I believe, may be consulted during the final, uh, preparation briefs and arguments. So I can't guarantee that that, uh, vendor won't have an additional bill in the future.
We certainly, this is a very substantial claim. We have to defend it.
Thank you. Uh, now on, uh, page two, number four, uh, basic life support programs, fifty-three thousand dollars. Can you tell me what those basic life support programs are? Uh, that, that you're working with the county on?
Yes. For ambulance service to Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital. Did you get that?
Interesting, so, uh, I thought Robert Wood Johnson provided free ambulance service to the city. Is that, uh, not sure, I guess the county chips in, or, who's paying the fifty-three thousand?
We are.
Okay, so, so we're paying the county fifty-three thousand or we're paying Robert Wood Johnson fifty-three thousand?
Robert Wood Johnson.
Okay, and what are we getting for the fifty-three thousand? So that means they'll, that they'll just answer any call, that, that ambulance, any call for an ambulance? So, but what are the terms of the agreement? I just wanna know the base, I wanna understand this.
The, the money comes to us through the county to defray the cost. So the county is involved and it's fifty-three thousand enough to provide ambulance services to residents in the city of New Brunswick who may find need to go to the hospital.
So the money's actually coming from the county through the city?
To defer the cost, correct.
Okay. Does, does anybody know the total cost? Is the total cost fifty-three thousand or is that just the cost that the county's charging?
It's the cost of the one-year term. This is an annual contract that, uh, we entered into an agreement in a year. I think the amount varies a little bit in the calculation of which I don't know how they arrived at the number, but I suspect it's based upon post-probation.
So, so, yeah, my question is, is still, and I think valid, says, basic life support bonus for, uh, twenty seventeen, amount to be received, fifty-three thousand. So I can only assume that means that's the county's, uh, portion. And Mr. Shamies has indicated that it's meant to defray the cost to the city. Does anybody know the total cost to the city? Cause I was under the impression Robert Wood was doing this for free because they're based here. Um, but, but apparently they're, they're getting at least fifty-three thousand dollars a year to do the ambulances.
I don't know.
We don't have the total cost. We don't have it.
Okay, well, I guess.
Mr. Locke would probably be better to answer that, but unfortunately, he's, he's.
He's not here.
I'm sorry to hear that. I, I hope he returns soon and maybe he can get me that answer. I, uh, can't be against defraying the cost. I, I, I just think it's important to know the total cost. Uh, and that would be an interesting factor, it's something I wanna know. And, uh, almost done. Uh, I'd like to ask about the chemicals for the, this is nearly, uh, nearly a million dollars in chemicals.
Whatever.
Seven twenty-three. Uh, I presume it's for the water utility? And I'd like to ask, just in general, uh, what changes have been made to the chemicals that are being used in, uh, you know, recently? Um, and how does this differ from the, you know, like, say, versus what we ordered last year? Okay.
Yeah, um, this is, uh, the recent bidding that, that came in. Um, there really was no significant increase, um, across the board in, in total. And, um, our chemicals haven't changed and our consumption is, is pretty much the same as it was last year.
Potassium permanganate being used now, or no?
Yes, it is.
It is?
Yes, it is. Wonderful.
Next one, seven twenty-six is the, uh, this is a great deal. If I could get this kinda deal on parking, uh, I would do it. Thirty bucks per vehicle per month for Turner Construction to park in Buglo Park. It's, uh, what is this for? What's this for the?
That's a construction, that's a project that they're working on, right?
It's a project at, uh, the hospital, St. Peter's Hospital.
And they, they don't have, around St. Peter's Hospital, it's a little congested. And since we had the space in Buglo Park, that was a good revenue service, uh, revenue generator.
Is this a good revenue generator? Thirty bucks per vehicle per month?
I mean, we're, we're not making, looking to make, uh, a ton of money. We're helping have St. Peter's Hospital, they're a project.
I gotcha. And which project is this? Is this the, the old Votech School, or is this?
That I don't know.
Tunnel up would have it.
Okay, I, I, I have that, but I, I can get that for. I have it right here.
Thank you, I, I would appreciate that. Um, and, uh, you know, I guess I, I, I just wanna mention that, uh, there's legal bills here for the city, police department, in two cases. Um, both of them are, are being paid to Benedict and Altman, that, uh, law firm. And, gosh, I just think it's, it's crazy that the police director doesn't come here. If you're paying his legal bills in all these cases, the least he could do is, is show up at one council meeting. I, I, and I, I don't understand why this police director has a different practice than, you know, the prior police directors who used to come to the meetings. I don't understand why, uh, the other directors come to the meetings, but not the police director, never. And it just doesn't make sense to me. I think accountability starts at the top and who should.
A stand for this?
If, I think that's, that's, uh, probably, oh, one more. Well, two more. Uh, Hatchmont McDonald, uh, seven forty-seven.[1694.14] Miscellaneous supplemental engineering services. Can you tell me what, what are those miscellaneous services?
Miscellaneous, oh, for engineering services.
Yes. Uh, please, the council, yes. Every year we enter, uh, we do an RFP for supplemental engineering services. Those services include, uh, the C-four license operator for the sanitary system, which is funded through the public works. In addition, we, uh, use that, uh, services for CAD support, for in-house design, some of our baby projects that we do in design, as well as, uh, we have a plethora of, of availability of professionals to support our department in some of our projects.
Thank you. So they provide C-four, uh, licensed operator, licensed person. Interesting. Thank you. Last one I'm gonna ask, is the last one. I don't, just the last one. Site performance bond reduction. Can you just explain what, why, uh, the, uh, site bond is being reduced? And, and can you clarify whether all the junk on this particular site has been cleaned up?
Specific to the bond reduction, uh, seven-sixty was a, a large site plan application, which was, uh, got the normal channels approved. They had requested a bond reduction. They are complete with plans with the, uh, the exception, we want a clarification on some stone that they use along the, uh, the Jersey Avenue corridor, which is NJDOT right away. So we're just waiting for a letter of clarification. Specific to the site, there is a pile of concrete rubble, which they intend to crush and reuse. We're not gonna finalize the release of the remaining funds until that, those, uh, those items are removed from the site.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the time.
Anybody else on the resolutions? Yes. Please step forward with your name and address for the record. And reminder that you have five minutes.
Evan Demore, sixty Patterson Street. So this is my first city council hearing, to be honest. I'm just curious as to what the nature is of the lawsuit between what it sounds like is New Brunswick and another entity? Because I believe that the previous speaker brought it up, but I'm just not sure what the clarification is around that.
Which one is supposed to say? Which one, Robert?
It was the lawsuit that he mentioned between, uh, City of New Brunswick and another entity.
Maybe it's more back.
There's a few of them, aren't there?
It deals with a construction.
Yeah.
Contract.
That's currently litigation.
Allegation of breach. And we don't discuss pending litigation matters in public meetings, but that's the nature and extent of it. The matter went to arbitration, as it was required to do under the contract documents, and, uh, we are litigating the matter in that form.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else on the resolutions? See none?
Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan. Councilmember Esteban.
Yes.
Councilmember Sephora Ledwick.
Yes.
Council President Fleming.
Yes. All right, now we're gonna go to the public portion. But I remind you to please step forward to the microphone. Please give your name and address for the record. And reminder that you have five minutes. Please step forward, anybody.
Please, Councilman, my name is Charak Patel. Uh, One Spring Street. One Spring Street, New Brunswick, New Jersey. Just to give myself a, a brief intro, um, I'm a current employee at Robert Wood Johnson under Rutgers University. I've been working there for the past five years, currently a cardiology fellow that sees the cardiologies in training. I've been there, like I said, for five years. Our job involves working with patients, um, being the first line of defense when a patient comes into the hospital, or when a, one of our numerous number of clinics, um, uh, that are facilitated by Rutgers University. In October of this past year, uh, Rutgers had moved, had moved to a new payroll system that effectively caused five thousand-plus employees to lose a, uh, one weeks, uh, one weeks of pay. We represent as a committee of residents and, uh, as a committee of interns and residents about, uh, one thousand employees under the Rutgers University system. As a delegate of the, uh, committee of interns and residents, we, I understand there is a law under books, a anti-wage theft law, um, at, in New Brunswick. I was wondering if anything, we were hoping, we have multiple members here, um, touched upon to the effects of this wage loss, um, on their individual lives, of hoping that if anyone in the council or the council general can help us out in our battle to recuperate these wages. Effectively, we worked, we worked three weeks and definitely two weeks' worth of wages. This affects everyone from our attending, those senior physicians, to all the way to the, uh, those junior, uh, physicians that are starting out in the training.
I knew, we, we do have a wage that ordinance, and we can take a look at it, you know, and go through the effective, through the system, and, you know, how it works out, you know, one way or the other. Uh, we do take wage decisions seriously, because it has happened before in the city, and, you know, things have been resolved. And if you guys can, you said you're the official spokesperson, we can get in touch and we can push you, put you through the proper channels.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right.
There are a few of us who are also leaving. We're third-year fellows, and we're moving on to, you know, jobs in the next five months. So timing is another issue. I'm moving to Virginia, you know, there are things that are happening in our lives. I mean, we do our work, we come to work, we do, we take care of patients, we, you know, see everybody. We're not asking for more money, we're just asking for money that we're owed. So we would, you know, appreciate if you guys could help us in a time we can't.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Council President, just so the group can hear this, um, Mr. Patterson's office is in charge of carrying out the mandate of the sick leave ordinance. And there's a formal process under the, under the ordinance, if these folks wanna make a complaint, to see, number one, if they're covered under it. Number two, uh, there's a mediation process that the ordinance provides for.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I was gonna say, it's a wage theft, but why not sick theft?
Yeah.
It's a wage theft.
Sick pay, I'm sorry.
Right.
I totally misunderstood. Disregard any of that.
Yes.
We still do it.
Yeah.
Mr. Patel, what is the hospital saying that, why they are not paying?
The hospital, the hospital. So it's, uh, it's, it's two different entities. We work at Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital, which is a private entity, and we are employed by Rutgers University, which is obviously a public entity. The issue that.
Yeah, what is Rutgers?
Rutgers is essentially saying that we switch payrolls. Now, every one of us understands that sometimes computers malfunction. We are willing to work with Rutgers, however, it's been four months. And like, uh, my colleague said, um, Dr. Ready has said that, you know, the timing is kind of a factor. The deal that they had offered us is that one day extra pay per year, per five, over five years, to compensate for that one weeks of pay. Now, some of us won't even be here at five weeks. This is not a normal job. This is not something that we plan on doing for the rest of our lives, to work eighty, ninety, hundred-hour weeks, um, where we're taking care of patients. For instance, today I walked in the hospital at five-thirty, I just came out. So, uh, five-thirty this morning, I should say, and I just walked out. So, I mean, that's not something, we, we're, we're understanding we're still in training, but we're just asking not to get paid more, but we're asking to get paid where we're contractually obligated to get paid.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else on the resolutions? I'm not resolutions, I'm sorry. Anybody else on the public comments? Reminder that you have five minutes, and please give your name and address just for the record.
Yes, uh, my name is David Hughes. I actually live in Highland Park, three-thirty South Third Avenue. I work in New Brunswick, one-thirty-one George Street. I am not an intern, and I don't work in medical school, but I am an anthropologist and I'm president of the faculty union, the Rutgers AUP AFT. I appreciate very much, Council President, your willingness to take on this matter. I'm just suggesting it be expedited. Because we have a situation where the largest employer in the city is flouting an ordinance of the city. And I deal with management at Rutgers all the time. And this is kind of a systematic problem. You've probably heard the cornerstone issue, where the university has switched from one software to another, and is months late in paying vendors, many of whom are businesses in New Brunswick, who are hurting financially. And management says, "Well, uh, listen, guys, sorry, uh, we're changing, uh, we're migrating, we're crossing over, and stuff takes time, and records get lost, and we'll just have to understand." And these people have been waiting five months, and, uh, they don't need to understand, they need their money. And I assure you, when you're a student, and your tuition bill is due on July first, and you say to the bursar, "Well, listen, I, I've got this app on my phone, I've got mobile banking, but there's a little glitch in the app, and I'm not gonna be able to pay my tuition for another five months, so be patient." Rutgers is not gonna be patient. So I, I urge you to expedite, and I urge you to understand, which I'm sure you do, that these are people who work for the residents of this city, who work for Central Jersey. And I speak as a human being here. My son was born in this hospital. I went to this hospital, the emergency room, to get thirty-four stitches in my knee the other year. My wife is treated for a heart condition at this hospital. We all, every family depends on these workers, and they're getting stiffed for no good reason. Professor of anthropology, but I'm also president of the Rutgers AUP AFT Faculty Union Board. It represents seven thousand.
It's just not medical students, because, uh, there's people that I know that I read, that I, or my relatives, that it's the whole Rutgers Medical School that's just going into.
Yes.
All the employees, they do ultrasound, whatever, everybody.
It's a systematic problem for all the legacy.
They're blaming on university medicine dentistry's payroll system, same old days, and maybe that they don't have the extra week in there. That's the way I understand it.
Right. That's not, that's not an explanation. That's, that's, that's just, it's obviously criminal and illegal, what the administration of Rutgers University is doing, and they've been doing it for five months in violation of the intention of this city, and to the detriment of residents of this city and the services that the city depends on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Council.
Anybody else, more public comments? Anybody else can step forward?
Good evening, once again, Charles Cradell, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. I just wanna say, off the bat, I stand with the workers of Rutgers University, and what is being done to them is wrong, and that's why I asked you about this at your last meeting, and that's why I sent you an email with some information about it, and I, I hope that you'll take action quickly. I do wanna follow up on an issue that I brought to the water utilities' attention last week about discolored gross water coming out of faucets at, uh, a building on Home News Row. Can you please ask the water director to speak about what was done after I raised that issue?
Mr. President, we're not gonna have the water utility director talk about water quality issues, things of that nature, Mr. Cradell. For the reasons I expressed in the last meeting about threatened litigation, I had a conversation with Mr. Cradell's attorney this afternoon, and told him that, uh, in light of the threatened litigation, we wouldn't be discussing this matter with Mr. Cradell.
To be clear, the water utility director will not discuss the quality of the drinking water with the editor of New Brunswick today?
Yes.
Shame, poor shame. I hope that others in this audience will get up and ask the question I just asked about the disgusting water coming out of the faucets on the news row. But I'll spend the rest of my time talking about ethics. And I'm going to share with you a few complaints. So, first of all, these are for the clerk's office, these are official complaints of ethical violations. There you go. I'll focus my remarks on one that I have copies of for the board, and maybe if there's one extra, you can give it to TK. That's one, this part maybe, stepping up here. So, this is an ethics complaint against Mr. Anthony Vignolo. He is the Ethics Board's attorney. He has not followed the local government ethics law, which requires him to submit a financial disclosure statement once per year. He doesn't think he needs to follow the law that the Ethics Board that he represents is supposed to enforce. This sets a bad example. This is, uh, basically a guy who's part of the problem, being in charge of the solution. He's gotta go. And I hope that, uh, him and his firm are not involved in adjudicating or just, uh, dealing with this complaint, because that would be a huge conflict of interest. So, uh, it's been said that, "Oh, yeah, we'll get people on the Ethics Board, and, oh, yeah, we'll, we'll get around to having meetings and doing things." Well, now's your chance, you've got three ethics complaints before the Ethics Board. Can you tell me, when does the mayor plan to appoint people to the vacant seats on the Ethics Board?
The mayor's, yes, and goes to the mayor's office?
Yes, when, does, when does he plan to, to fill the vacant seats on the Ethics Board?
I know there's a process that, uh, we're going through now. I can't tell you exactly when, or who the people are that they identify. I'm sure it'll happen shortly. As you see, there's many appointments that start at the beginning of the year.
Okay. And, and can you tell me, does, does, uh, Mr. Shammy believe that Mr. Vignolo is required to file a financial disclosure statement in connection with his work representing the Ethics Board? Or is he above the law?
I haven't reviewed the law, Mr. Cradell, this is the first time I'm hearing about it. I'd have to do a little research to see whether or not there's any basis for your complaint or your ethics violation. But certainly, since you filed a form, a normal complaint, it'll be dealt with and adjudicated.
Okay, I hope so. Uh, I also need to give an update on the Housing Authority. Uh, I wanna thank Councilwoman Escobar for coming to the most recent meeting, where after, uh, you know, publicizing that they were breaking the Open Public Records Act, now finally, they are starting to, uh, respond to some of my requests, which in some cases were several months old. But I do wanna address, uh, their position, because the Housing Authority starts off every response with a sob story that is sick, absolutely disgusting, that they say they can't comply with the Oprah law, which is, of course, the government transparency law, used to be called the right-to-know law. They say they can't comply with it, because, you know, maintenance is really hard there, and the buildings are old, and, uh, you know, they're trying to help all these, uh, people who live there, and they just are too busy to comply with this law that they're required to comply with. And they have the nerve to say that I've made incessantly high-volume and overbroad fishing-type Oprah requests, and that I'm substantially interfering with the New Brunswick Housing Authority operations, and that far from serving the legitimate goal of government transparency, well, I'm just abusing the Oprah statute, and that that has the impact of impeding the NBHA's ability to complete necessary day-to-day functions. Consequently, I'm harming the citizens who receive affordable public housing or Section Eight rental assistance from the NBHA, and my repetitive voluminous Oprah requests harm those in need. I think anybody who looks at the facts will see that that's not true. And if, if it was true, they would probably be making some effort to comply with the law, but they have not, until I came to two meetings and caught them and shamed them for not doing their job and not complying with the law. They have a person in charge of the Oprah requests who doesn't know what he's doing, and keeps breaking the law, even though they've been sued at significant cost to the taxpayers. This is insane. You know, making the same mistake, uh, twice, maybe I could understand. They just keep doing it over and over again. They are either incompetent or corrupt, and if you want some, uh, money here, you can just take a look at, uh, this, I have copies of this. This is, uh, six hundred dollars that was, uh, given to an employee named Andrea Ito White. You're supposed to provide receipts for what you do with the money. There are no receipts. She absconded with six hundred bucks. So, uh, I hope that, uh, maybe they can retrieve this six hundred bucks and use that to help all those poor residents that they really care so much about at that Housing Authority. Shame on them.
Thank you, Mr. Cradell.
First, I'm gonna start off by saying, uh, those African-Americans were brought to America by way of transatlantic slave trade. This is the first day of Black history, my friend. You're not ashamed to be Black amongst them, you know. It is Black history, you know, and, and honor Black history. Normally, I would ask, um, TK Shammy, um, Black historical question, but ask all of you guys a question. Are you guys familiar with the New York riots, eighteen-sixty-three? Eighteen-sixty-three New York riots? Anybody, somebody? Uh, well, I'll brief up those who aren't, um, there. In eighteen, just there. In eighteen-sixty-three, there was a draft from the Civil War. And in, uh, Lower Manhattan, the Irish decided that they weren't going, going to participate in the quote-unquote Nigger War. So what they did, July, from July thirteenth to July sixteenth, they, uh, burned buildings down, they killed about two hundred Blacks. They burned several buildings, they even burned a child, uh, infirmary, uh, you know, adolescent, with children, about two hundred children, and they had to evacuate the children out of the, um, building. And, um, they just, you know, terrorized the entire town, simply because they didn't wanna fight in the Civil War, and quote-unquote, what they said, the Nigger War. Now, to me, that's the most unpatriotic act in Americans' history, that a lot of people don't discuss. Black people were hung, killed, beaten, and we served in every war in Americans' history. Even in World War Two, where the soldiers and the lieutenants treated the German prisoners better than they treated the Black soldiers. We still fought in every war with honor. And this country never turned out honored, so that's why when we pledge allegiance, I said that, because it's a mockery. And anybody who does research on the pledge of allegiance, you wouldn't stand either. I'm not a just-go-for-the-float Negro. I research things. So the Irish were the most unpatriotic race in Americans' history that is not, is not talked about, just like you use Black history. And that looks, you know, blacks are plugged because of that. It's okay. But, um, I'll keep it simple. I have one question, well, I have a few questions, but they all geared to Captain. First, I wanted to know, I, I mentioned an incident that took place in McDonald's. I didn't have the actual date that it took place, but he does, I just like to know what date that that incident took place. I didn't have the actual date that it took place, but he does. I'd just like to know what date that that incident took place.
I don't know if I'll be able to call you tomorrow.
He don't call me. He never calls me.
I call you every time.
I'm going to try you right now. Try my phone right now. You always say you'll call me. You never call me. Each council meeting, you call me, you never call.
If you give me an email address, I'll email you, and then there'll be a record of it as well. I'll give you your email? No?
I'll give it to you when I finish. All right. I have some concerns about his response to him not responding to the young lady. I have a lot of concerns. I just can't, you know, it's eating at me. What I don't do now, what I'm doing now, being at my office, disrespect it. And, you know, I'm taking these council meetings a little more serious. What I do now is I look at the previous council meeting. Before, I didn't do that. I just looked at the chip for all the people. Now, I'm looking at it and I'm studying, I'm watching, and I'm looking at faces. So now I'm taking things more serious. And he said that there was an investigation launched. It was by Internal Affairs, if I'm not mistaken.
You're right.
He's cap, he's sub, what are you, captain? What are you, sergeant? What's your position in Internal Affairs? He's captain of Internal Affairs. And you didn't, you hadn't partaken in any of that?
I just told you, Internal Affairs is not investigated from now on. If you ask me, I said no. I kept talking without listening to what I said. Internal Affairs is not investigated.
Here's the problem I have. For one, I talk, you're not, you don't never, you have to say anything. You don't have the date. A lady almost lost her life in McDonald's. You don't even know what date it was, but they launched an investigation on it? How could you not, how could he not even have the, this is, you let, could you let him get passes? They launched, they launched, they launched an entire investigation on the situation and he don't even remember the date.
So...
He can't even, he can't even remember when he was, the date that he was investigating. Now, here it is, the council, the meeting prior to that, you know, Dominic Culey Allen, if he's in here, he stood up proudly. And he expressed how, when I told you about the Fuqua family entered their house, and he came from New Brunswick on his day off and stopped them from entering their house. The police were there. But you have two officers, the law's got to change or something. You have two officers who sat in a car while the female was unresponsive. Anybody knows what guarantee mode is? It's no more than 100 yards away. Okay, let me get to it. There's no more than 100 yards away.
I'm going to grant you. 30, I feel versatile.
Hey, hey, listen, listen. You can stop me now. I'll just come back.
I know.
Stop me whenever. I'm not going.
I'm sitting right there.
I play it. If that clock off, stop me. If that clock off, stop me, give me time to do more of my work, and I'll come back.
Okay, can we? And you know, if you can't wrap it within 30 seconds, can we?
Listen, I'll, I'll, I'll take 30 seconds then, all right? But listen. Two officers. You had, you had, you had a person, Dominic Culey Allen, who works for the fire department, who rushed down and just to stop people who had permission to go in and hunt. You had two police officers with a female in the McDonald's who's a hun, a female who's a hun. I guarantee it's about from here to the public bathroom. Two captains sitting in a car hearing a call about a person in McDonald's that's unresponsive. Now, nothing, nobody working McDonald's but teenagers. So they left that responsibility on untrained teenagers. People who don't know how to respond to emergencies. They left that to the teenagers in McDonald's. And now you have a person who's willing to stop a family. What if that was two firefighters and the building was burning? Would they be allowed to get a pass like Captain Miller and Captain Sable?
Like I said, we're at time right now, but we will, let's continue this, we'll continue this conference.
You will have a response for me next meeting?
There was a read, Captain Miller.
I want to know why the city justify that. Why are you justifying that? You know what I think? I think that them officers being at that McDonald's was on 27 by Wright Place in the Ville, they assumed that that young lady that was unresponsive was African-American. But she wasn't. She just happened to be a white female. But it still could have cost her her life. That's why they didn't respond, because the area they were in. If it was a downtown Burger Kings or downtown McCade, uh, restaurant, that Chipotle or something like that, they would have responded in the proper manner. But being, they were by the Ville, by Wright Place, they sat in their cars and looked on their phones while somebody almost died. And the cities condone it. Have some answers for me next council meeting.
Yes, name and address for the emergency. Eric Giver, I live over in Ward II. I don't know if anybody made it. Yeah, Eric Giver, I live over in Ward II. It was one, don't know if anybody made it out to the protest in Mars last night, but I really hope you did, because it was really a sight to see. The concerned students at Rutgers combined with concern and frankly scared residents of New Brunswick coming to air grievances over the recent executive order by President Trump. And it really highlighted that there's a large number of people in this community that are directly affected by these kinds of either already happening or projected legislation that might happen over the next four years by our president. And I just ask the council, please do remember that and use any power that you may have over the next four years to really work to protect the marginalized community that resides in New Brunswick who you are.
Well, official, we are a welcoming city to people of all races, all creeds. And in New Brunswick, we have a history of that. I mean, going back before our version Latino population, it was in the Hungarian population. Before that, it was the Irish. Before that, there were several other populations. We know that there's a lot of anxiety out there and what we do, I can't speak for everybody, but I know we are working on assuring the, because a lot of us right now, it's a lot of uncertainty right now. Everywhere, I mean, across, not just immigration orders, there's a lot of uncertainty everywhere from this new administration that's come in. And I know we're all working towards solutions and trying to put our heads together to make sure that everybody's protected.
Yeah, and I'm glad that you're working towards that. I would just ask that at some point, even though, even maybe at this point, if you speak words and can address to the citizens of New Brunswick, pledging to continue to work to protect them in the face of potentially fascist or oppressive federal orders might really help quell some concerns in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room can step forward? See you none?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Council Vice President Anderson. Councilmember Egan. Councilmember Estobar. Councilmember Sephora Ledwick. Council President Fleming.
Yes.